I'm waiting for somebody. I'd like to call to order the January 11th meeting of the Shelby Township Planning Commission, and I will guarantee everybody will be done by 8:30. Madam Secretary, would you call the roll?
Mr. Dallow.
Mr. DeSico.
Here.
Ms. Cassali, absent. Mr. Bernardi?
Here.
Mr. Turner?
Here.
Mr. Appone, absent. Mr. Vier?
Here.
Chairman Moffett, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Next, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Moved by DeSico, support by Moore, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Now, if we can remember this far back, I'll entertain a motion to move the minutes of the November 16th meeting.
So moved. Support.
Moved by Dallow, support by Turner?
Yeah.
Any questions, comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. First item is correspondence. We received a letter from O'Brien Paddock. Mr. Winn, you want to?
Yes, let me, this is property at 5453 Auburn Road. It's a parcel right next to Coachman's Lounge near Parkdale. And there's a small retail building on the front, and in the back, there's an accessory building. And we've, Mr. Green and I had some conversations with the owner. They wanted to put a larger accessory building in the back. They have some of their own recreational vehicles that they're kind of stored out there, and they want to put them in a building. The zoning is odd. It's split zoned. It's R1B in the back, C2 on the front. Certainly, we wouldn't want to authorize storage of recreation vehicles. That wouldn't be allowed there. But if it's on personal use, and if the extra accessory building's going to be used to store supplies for the resale shop in front, I think it's an opportunity to make some improvements to the site and clean the site up a little bit. And I don't ever want to discourage people from doing that. I just wanted to vet it with the planning commission to make sure you have the same conclusion that we have, that this is something that's probably worthwhile for the property and for that area of the township. And if that's the case, then we would say, you know, go ahead and submit a site plan. We'd evaluate it. And, you know, again, we're probably looking at more than just an accessory building. That parking lot and driveway access could be improved. There's an opportunity here to maybe bring that site into some reasonable compliance with the ordinance, and I think it's a great opportunity.
Good.
Just looking for your planning commission's concurrence if you share that point of view.
Does anyone differ with the recommendation from the planning director? Hearing none, I think you have your...
We'll follow up the applicant. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Members. Okay, this evening, we have three site plans to review. The first one, Site Plan 1-5-23, shops at Stony Creek. Is the petitioner a representative here?
Evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Steve Nieper, and I represent MM 26 Mile LLC. We are developers of the shops at Stony Creek. And I've come to, before the board tonight, asking to revise the site lighting in the parking lot areas only of the site. It's been approved for 20-foot-high light poles within the whole site, including the perimeter. And I'm asking that those lights around the perimeter remain exactly the same as what's been approved, but the lights within the parking lot area be raised from 20-foot to 30-foot so that we have a better lighting of the parking lot during the nighttime. That's what we're here for tonight. We're here to ask and answer any questions that you might have.
Why the change from, I mean, when you, from the initial submission? What changed that would work?
Well, if you look at the two different plans that I have submitted, you have one that shows a bunch of dark spots in it. That's what was approved. The new plan shows a much better lighting of the parking lot so that it would be safer for anybody doing any shopping during the night, or, you know, just having a safer environment of the shopping center itself.
Okay. Mr. Winn?
Yeah. We have some standards in the ordinance for lighting. We added those as part of an amendment maybe five to six years ago, recognizing that our standards created some situations where we had some lighting issues that have impacted the neighbors negatively. So we have the standard for parking lot lights at 20 feet, with the planning commission has some discretion to increase those, provided you don't go any higher than the height, maximum building height in the district, which in this case would be 35 feet. Then there's some standards offered for increasing the height. And I understand what Mr. Nieper's offering. It's a responsible point of view for a developer. However, having experienced these situations where neighbors were adversely impacted, my default is, I think, with the neighborhood, we want to try to balance the safety of the customers at the shopping center with the needs of the neighborhoods. And I think the overriding concern here would be the impact it would have on the neighbors. I guess I'd be more inclined to say, let's see how this looks when it's developed. And, you know, that doesn't, you're probably not going to replace the light fixtures, but there may be some other ways to add light where it's necessary for safety without adversely impacting the people on Pearson or in that subdivision to the west on Edgewood Drive. So I'm not in support of the change, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I mean, is there, are these the only two options? I mean, is this the only option? Are there other options? Can be done with just the, with the fixture?
I didn't really look at any other options. I mean, Kroger's has done this already within the township before, and that's what brought it to our attention. The light poles that we want to raise are all out in front of Kroger's, going up to 26 Mile Road, but not at 26 Mile Road. The lights behind Kroger don't change at all, so the impact on Pearson Road is negative. The subdivision to the west, those lights also are already approved at 20-foot, and we are not changing those lights at all.
Okay, but would there be any impact from those 30-foot lights internal?
No, they do not leave our property. The light, we have done a plan, which you have with you, that shows the light not leaving the property at all. I mean, can you see a light in a long ways away? Sure, you can see a light, but does it illuminate anything on your property?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Winn.
Mr. Nieper, was the Kroger experience the one at 20, the site at 23 in Hayes?
Yeah, that was under, that was under a different zoning ordinance. I understand that.
Right, and the circumstances are a little different, given the surrounding development, so...
You're right.
And I'm not saying there isn't a way to adjust later on. I just, I'm just real hesitant right now to authorize this, given that potential.
I don't know what to say. I mean, I'm offering something that is going to be a betterment to the community as far as the lighting and the impact as far as safety goes, without interfering with any of the homeowners of the vicinity.
There's one other thing I want to offer. I mean, no question that you have the photometric study, but that's, that's not showing lights when they're in the field. I mean, you know, you can only, you can measure it, and you can show it, but until you see it is when you're going to evaluate what the impact's going to be. And again, this is a, that's a pretty significant change. That's a third taller than we allow, and that's where I'm really concerned.
But Glenn, even as you know, the 30-foot lights are not going to shine over the top of Kroger and go beyond Pearson Road.
But there's that impact to the neighbors to the west that don't have that relationship with the building in front of them, and I think we have to equally account for that impact on them.
There's a wall to the west on top of a berm that's 12-foot high.
And those houses are taller than the berm and the wall.
You are correct, but the light doesn't shine straight across from those lights. It shines down.
Understood. And just a different, there's a different philosophy.
Listen, there's a sensitivity here.
Yeah, I understand.
Because, I mean, we approved, you know, that's a fairly aggressive use of that property, you know, next to the two residential neighborhoods. Had this been proposed, as part of the submission, when we had the public hearings too, and this was vetted, and this was understood, and we were able to take feedback from the community, you know, that's a little different, too. Again, I'm not a lighting expert, okay? But I know folks are going to start screaming, and they have every right to scream, if by fact we change this, we amend this, and allow 30-foot poles, and, you know, and there is light pollution in the property.
Would it help if I had an expert here?
I think so. To me, it would. Do you got somebody? Okay, good.
Good evening. My name's Santo Landa, owner of GenCo LLC Electrical Contractor. We were directly involved in the design to help illuminate the site in a more even photometrics for the front parking lot, which basically faces north. And as Steve alluded to, we at no time around the perimeter of the building touched any light. We kept it at 20 feet. The poles that we put down that were, that we put in, that were facing north do not go above the height of the Kroger store. So there's, it's virtually impossible, if you took a look at those photometric studies that I have in front of you, you'll see...
All right, forget Pearson. Okay, we'll concede Pearson. There's not, there won't be impact on that, okay? Or any change to the, what's been approved. But what about the whole, the neighborhood to the west of the property?
The neighborhood to the west doesn't change at all. It doesn't change at all because those are only 20-foot poles that go along the west.
Yeah, but no, the 30-foot poles will be in the center of the parking lot, correct?
Yes.
Okay. That light will, you know, with direct access to the houses to the, to the west?
No, center of the parking lot only. If you look at that photometric plan, it goes from south to north direct. Does not affect the west at all. The only thing that we...
So the, so the fixtures only point in a certain direction?
Yes, the distribution that we...
So there's no, there is no light that will be seen, those poles won't be seen from the west?
No, the distribution that we have on those poles, they have different type distributions. And the distributions that we have on those poles, and you can see on the photometrics, if you take a look at it, it will only go as far as the buildings that are on the west property line. That's as far as they go. Then the lights that are placed on the west property line, that distribution forces the light this way, which is exactly the way it always has been planned. The 30-foot poles is only for the main thoroughfare that goes directly north to south in front of Kroger, from the south heading to the north. I know that everybody has that photometric study there. If you take a look at it, you'll see no difference in the illumination on the west side of the property from the 30-foot pole to the 20-foot pole.
Any questions from the board?
I do.
What kind of lights you using for the existing approval? The watts and...
It's LED light.
How many watts?
It's a 400, it's basically a 1,000 watt comparable, okay? But it's 250 watts LED.
Did you ever thought of increasing that to spread the lights more?
Well, that's, that's really as high as you could go. It gives you 1,000 watts equivalent of power.
So there is no other lights higher than 250 watts, you're telling me?
In an LED application, in an LED. So, and per the specification, all the lights in the parking lot are LED.
Did you considering adding another pole in the parking lot somewhere to cover the area that is not?
Well, it always covered the area, the way that it was designed.
Well, covered properly.
It was always covered, but there was, if you look on that sheet that kind of looks black and white, you'll see a lot of hot spots, if you will. So directly down from the pole coming this way, very, very bright when you have the 20-foot pole. When you go to the larger pole, it's up a little higher, spreads the light out a little nicer. Does not impact the rest, you know, the site. It just takes the light and gives it a safer environment and a more clean look.
Thank you. What about, how about adding more poles?
Well, as we said, the way we did it was exactly the way it was designed in the beginning with the 20-foot poles.
But if you had more, if you had more, if you had more 20-foot poles?
I don't think you're looking for more light. I don't think that that's the issue here, is not looking for light, looking for more light, just looking for a more even spread throughout the front of the parking lot, from the face of Kroger heading north. That's all it does. Not on the perimeters.
This plan here shows you where the light poles are to be at 20-foot high. They'll also be in the same location for the 30-foot high, out in front in the parking area only, not along the perimeters.
Yeah, and I understand that. Go to the mic if you're going to address us, though. And we have, we have, we have copies of this.
Okay.
All right, so you don't need more, so there's not going to be any more light with the 30-foot? I guess, we're not...
No, you're not, not at all, not at all. In fact, yeah, the illumination, if you look, and it's on the bottom of the page, if you just get a minute, you look at L201 on each one of the pages, on the bottom, it'll tell you what the average foot candles are that you have on the site. Typical retail center average is three, three-foot candles. This year shows 3.4 throughout the whole site. Doesn't take it...
Again, this, I mean, this is difficult for us. I'm not, you know, I'm not a lighting, you know, engineer. I have, but when someone tells me they want to go from a 20-foot to a, to a 30-foot and say it's not going to impact the folks to, you know, to the neighbors, it's hard for me to get my handles, my hands around that.
Yeah, I mean, which is the reason why we presented all the photometric study here, because it's even a little less than what originally was proposed.
Mr. Chair, a question for Mr. Landa, correct? Have you done this specification 30 to 32 feet at any other Kroger locations?
Yes, we have.
Where at?
Which is at 23 Mile Road in Hayes.
Anywhere else?
Those would be the two, the most recent one. That was the most recent one. We did one also in Canton.
At a Kroger site?
Ford Road, yeah, it was a Kroger site, yes. Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Moore, did you have a question?
I did, but it was just, I guess I'm not understanding this. If your concern is for the safety of patrons, I don't understand why then increasing the number of light poles, you would not have the same, I guess I'm confused.
Adding more light poles is going to add more obstructions within the parking lot. As you know, right now, they're on every other aisle in the parking lot. To add more lights, you'd be on every aisle of the parking lot. It's just more obstructions.
So you're trying to diffuse the light or...
That's what the 30-footers are going to do. They're going to, like, for right now, the 20-footers come here. Well, when you go up 30-foot, if this is a 20-footer on here, a 30-footer is going to be out here. It just spreads the light farther within the parking area itself.
All right. I mean, I think, I think I'm starting to understand what you're trying to do. The concern I have, and especially given that the planner has some reservation, is that because you're going from 20 to 30-foot, you know, there is a potential that the neighbors are going to, are going to be impacted by that. Now, you tell me no. The problem is if, if you're wrong, what, what am I, you know, what's in, I look to the, to the planner, what's our...
Well, we don't, you know, we lose leverage to fix it.
Yeah.
You know...
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Vier?
Did I understand you to say there would be none of these 32-foot poles either on the south or west portion of the property?
Absolutely. They're all going to be the 20-footers that have already been approved.
Because the main reason for the suggestion of denial is because of the adverse impact of the abutting single-family homes, which I think everyone on the planning commission could understand. But you, I thought you said there would be none of these 32-foot poles on these two sections. Is that true?
That's true. We're not changing anything on the perimeter of the site.
Then, Mr. Chairman, I might ask the planner, what is your objection now that he says he's not changing the poles abutting the subdivisions?
Well, I still think they're going to be visible from the parking lot, from that neighbor's, the neighborhood to the west, Mr. Vier. That's my concern. I still think that they're less, they're more impacted than the people on Pearson because the building somewhat shields it from Pearson. Mr. Nieper's point's well taken. I just, I guess, maybe, you know, I'd like to look at that site at 23 in Hayes and see what that looks like, too. You know...
Now, is there, is there any kind of, like, lack of a word, a shade of some sort?
Shield?
A shield around?
There definitely is.
Okay, then maybe can, you know, then, I have a better assurance that that light is being directed down and not sideways?
I know you have those red rings there in front of you. And those red rings, those are, those are a type four distribution.
Yeah, come to the microphone. All those guys yelling at me.
That's a type four distribution. So if you look at the rendering that says the 32-foot pole, and I can give you the page, which is, well, it is L201, and it says 32 and a half foot poles. You'll see it shows...
All are say L201, so...
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to...
Mr. Chairman, can I explain something?
I'm going to point it out to you right here.
The fixtures that we only allow in our, are called a full cutoff fixture, which means the lens is flushed to the, to the fixture. So the lens doesn't drop down below the fixture, which then broadcast light horizontally is supposed to go straight down. Trouble is, as you make them, put them higher, you can, you can then see that fixture, the light actually is higher. I mean...
Yeah, so the canopy is higher.
The canopy is higher, and you can see that. And that does, that can have an impact when they're that bright. I mean, I, I mean, I want to vet this properly and be fair to these gentlemen, too. I mean, I, well, I wouldn't mind looking at a couple sites and see what we have to see if there's compatibility.
Can we table this item?
Yeah, yeah, I think that's fair. Does anybody have any comments? If additional, if not, I'll entertain motion to table.
Support.
DeSico, support by Bernardi. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. DeSico?
Yes.
Bernardi?
Yes.
Dallow?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Vier?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
And a chair vote yes. Okay, so hopefully we can get...
We'll make sure that we provide proper notification to all the neighbors again because we want them to understand this, and we don't want them to have an opportunity...
Yeah, I'm sorry. Did anyone want to comment? We'll watch, come on up.
I live on West Pearson, 7629. I've lived, I've been a resident for about 12 years now. I mean, I understand what they're saying, it won't be an effect, the higher lighting, but we've got Target. I mean, I know it's not directly shining into our yards, but light is light. You know, you still see that from your yard. I think it would be, I mean, it was adequate at 20-foot lighting that they had in July or whatever we approved this at. I think we should be able to keep it at that. I mean, it should be safe to shop at Kroger with 20-foot lights. I don't see a need to go to 30-feet lights with that. And if we want to solve the issue completely, we close at 8 o'clock, and we don't even have a need for lights. You know, that would be ideal for me, but I see no reason to even table the issue. I know you guys have already done that, but I, I think 20 feet is adequate for that shopping plaza, so I appreciate it.
Okay.
My name's Tina Zoldis, and I live on West Pearson, 7663. I'm actually, of course, opposed to the extending the light poles. My first question would be, what is the count? I didn't hear that in the discussion. How many are going to switch from 20 to 30 feet? I hear that along Pearson and the other neighborhood, those aren't going to be raised, but how many in total will be extending that third? You know, they're going to grow a third, like Glenn said. So I would want to know how many. So maybe when we come back next time, have a count of exactly how many, or share, because we don't have the plans in front of us, so... And my comment is, and I'm thankful for Glenn to bring this up, is they say it's not going to directly shine in our yards, and I agree with them. But however, like Jason had just said, that glow, that ambient lighting, you see it even from Target and Meyer and the Walgreens and the McDonald's there, there's that glow. The building will shield a lot of that for us on West Pearson, so the 20-foot, we didn't have a problem with originally because the building would form a barrier. But if you're going to extend those taller, and even though they're in the middle of that development, they're up higher, and you're still going to see that glow on the top, you're going to have the top of the building, but then you're going to see this light glowing down onto the parking lot behind it. So it will, in effect, affect us as homeowners. It's not going to be, you know, shining in our eyes or in our door walls, but yet you're still going to see that glow. And I want to keep that away from my residential experience. I don't really want to have it, hello, I have a Kroger right behind me. Especially that, yes, there's a berm, it's only six feet, we have the six-foot fence, and then there's, you know, there's some trees, but they're oak, I believe, and the leaves fall, so in the winter, there's no canopy. So, you know, even in time when they grow, like I said, in the winter, there's no canopy. So if we have this ambient lighting that we're going to see at the top of the building, that berm and that fence really isn't going to help reduce it. So if the board does approve to have these extended to 30 feet, maybe the developer can add some evergreens, some Christmas trees that keep their foliage, they'll grow to be 20, 40 feet, you know, whatever, help build more of a barrier from the light and noise and everything else. So I see this as an, an opportunity for us to get more on that hill because originally our goal as homeowners, we would have liked to have it like Target with a nice big berm, and then you could have had your 30-foot lights, and we wouldn't have seen them, so... That's it, just the count, and maybe consider adding more foliage to the berm to have more of a barrier take place.
Okay.
I live on Edgewood Drive at 56612. My particular lot is right at the intersection of the drain that was routed to accommodate that runs back to Pearson and around, and that berm actually tapers right before it gets to my property, and so does that fencing that they put up. So I have, right now, no protection at all. I can see the Target bullseye right through my great room window. It's been that way since Target was built. And then when they put in the Walgreens there, they had this annoying flashing light on the back of that building, which drove me crazy because it was just shining right into our house continuously. So now, again, I'm going to have no protection unless they can find a way. And I know when we initially met, they talked about being able to possibly do something to kind of shelter my property, either with some trees or something, when they build up that limestone culvert connection that they're going to tie in there. But I've heard nothing about that. I've seen those site plans. And again, like I said, I've got no protection. Ever since the, the lot was cleared, it's been nothing but clear, I can see nothing but that whole field out there. And so even with the 20-foot lights, I'm going to have, you know, quite a beautiful look at the gas station that's going to be put in there with, that's going to have lighting all around it as well 24 hours a day, or whatever they need. So I'm very much concerned, and I appreciate Mr. Winn's, you know, thoughts on, on the issue. I hope you kind of get a better idea. I'd like to see the photometric study, or at least the site plan, too, and see anything that's changed since it was originally presented, because I'm very much concerned, you know. Every one of us have driven from a distance into a, a parking lot from away, and you can see, you know where the parking lot is, you just follow the glow, right? You get the big, you know, big glow of all the lighting, and it's going to be the same thing for all of us. So our yards will get some of this ambient lighting, as the lady said, and that's, that's going to be a concern. You know, we're going to lose privacy in your backyard, and you're going to have to put, what, shades up on your, on your windows? So very much a concern that I have. Thank you.
Okay.
I live at 56600 Edgewood, and live right next to Mark. Up until recently, I have had to see the Target lights, and all the parking lot lights right across the lot. I'm not looking forward to more lights behind me. I do have the berm, and I do have the fence, which right now blocks the Target, but I can still see Walgreens. I can still see McDonald's, and I know when they put in more lights, they will. But the one thing I think I'd like to point out, and I agree with everyone, we don't like the glare. No one likes all the glare that comes. It isn't going to be just glare, it's going to be light shining up over the, the berm behind me. But the one thing I'd like to point out is everyone in this room drives at night with their headlights on. And when you drive in a parking lot, you pull into the space, and your headlights are there. there. So, the idea that there's some little dark spots, to me, is irrelevant. As long as the parking lot is lit, a couple little dark spaces mean nothing to us, because we have our cars and we have our headlights on. So, I agree with the board, and I appreciate your thinking of us, keep the glare down. Hopefully, the light won't be so bad, but it'll be enough that everyone will be able to enjoy the shopping center. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. You know, and note, too, that, that these plans are available at the, at the planning department, so at any time, Mr. Wynn and staff are nothing but accommodating, so...
I know the residents, they know where to find me. And we're happy to share that with anybody. I think our challenge is to look at a few different sites, perhaps, between now and then when they come back, get some, I'd like to talk to Mr. Neepur again and kind of get an idea, let's pinpoint which particular fixtures are changing, and maybe getting an example of what the fixture looks like again, getting another picture of that. We have with the site plan, but kind of putting this more comprehensively together. I mean, it's, we want to be fair to both sides. I just, I know we've had some lighting problems, and I, I'm really nervous about changing something that might impact a neighborhood.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, next item this evening is site plan number 06 dash 25. Cesari, Caesar, Caesar, Leone Industrial Building. Or representative?
Happy New Year. Pete Snyder, Urban Land Consultants, 8800, 23 Mile Road, Shelby Township, Michigan, representing the applicant. This is not a new site plan. This plan was actually originally approved in May of 2006. The applicant proceeded through engineering and had full engineering approvals, and proceeded into site construction, meaning he put in all the underground, but he never paved, and he never built the building, courtesy of the Great Recession. Now, he's coming back and has decided that he's ready to build the building and pave. There's been a slight up, you know, it's the same building footprint, it's the same site plan, he would just like to finish right now. Of course, in the interim, his site plan completely expired, so when we talked to your planner about it, he said, let's just bring it back in and let everybody see it again, so they have a chance at any questions they may have. So, I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Mr. Wynn?
Chairman, and I accept Mr. Snyder's explanation. There have been no changes to the zoning ordinance that are meaningful, that would affect parking, or setbacks, or any development standards. I don't think we'd serve any real purpose by having him start through the process and spend 90 days doing that. I think a reinstatement of the original plan would be appropriate.
Okay. And you were comfortable with the process that this went through 10 years ago?
Absolutely.
Nine plus years ago.
And again, if we had changed the setbacks for industrial or parking, actually, we've changed it parking, made it more liberal, not more conservative. So, the likelihood that they, they've met all the standards, they would continue to meet all those standards.
Okay.
Another, another industrial building, that's just great news for everybody.
Okay, any questions from the board? Seeing none. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. Oh, do you want to? Sorry. I make a motion to approve the re-submitted site plan for a proposed industrial building on the west side of Hayes Road, south of 23 Mile Road, site plan 06 dash 25 as submitted.
Support.
So, Mr. Bernardi, we shirked there twice on one motion. Moved by D'Esico, support by Turner. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Commissioner D'Esico?
Yes.
Commissioner Dalu?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yes.
There we go. Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Wyer?
Yes.
Chair votes yes.
Thank you very much.
Tell them this is the last time. This is the last bite at the apple.
Me, too.
Get it built.
You can only bill it so many times, and then you got to build it, right?
All right. Good luck. Okay, next and final, site plan number 02 dash 55. PUD number one, Kensington at Central Park. Some projects just never sort of go away.
Just like some people just never go away, right?
Mr. Snyder, are you going to allow him to take a shot at you like that?
I was in the front row, too, right, Pete? Yeah, different story. Good evening. Greg Winningline with Lombardo Homes, 51237, Danview Technology Court, Shelby Township. Till we move, we're moving, staying in Shelby. Good evening. In light of your comment about getting out of here by 8:30, I think we can hopefully accomplish that very well. Okay, if we pass something out to the board?
Sure.
Kensington at Central Park, part of the overall Central Park PUD, was originally approved for the fourplex product. We built several of them. Again, with the economy and that, we stopped building them. We are in the process of revising and getting ready to build what would be a three-unit building, and we have, what you're receiving is an elevation, a floor plan, and then the site plan, there's a small red square highlighting the two courts that never got built for Kensington. So, instead of the four-unit building, we would build a three-unit building. It's very, very similar to the four-unit building. It has a full basement, has a two-car attached garage. It's ranch, repeat ranch construction. We definitely are doing ranch construction here. It will have maintenance-free exterior materials. We have met with the association board members, and we worked out what they wanted for the elevations. There were some tweaks they had to the elevations and that, so we had their input on that. We met with the association, they voted on it in November. They voted on a master deed amendment, which was approved 62 to 2, I believe it was. So, it was overwhelmingly supported by the community, and I also have a letter of support from the association president, if you wanted it, just showing that they are in full support of it. But again, they already voted on it as a, as a community, so it's been approved on, on that side of it. We had a meeting with the residents, went through everything and so on. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them for you.
Okay. So, this isn't something, this is something that you've already submitted to us?
Yes, oh, absolutely.
I, I, it's a, I think it's the same part of the package you already got.
Yes.
They're, they're overprepared, as usual.
That's, you know...
Mr. Chairman? It's amazing how this product has changed since 1988, 89. Remember, they built those at Hayes and 22, and just kind of migrated around, and every iteration of this was a response to the market, made the product better.
Okay, any, any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Turner?
Just a statement. I think it's pretty interesting when a developer voluntarily comes in to reduce density. Usually, it's the other way around.
Right.
So, I, thank you for that.
I'm just amazed that Mr. Lombardo only had two people vote against him.
We, we did, we did the same thing in Macomb Township at the retreat, same product. That one was 80 to 0 was the vote, so very, very popular product.
That's good. All right. Any other questions or comments? Three shots.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Wyer?
Move to approve the revised site plan and building elevations for Kensington at Central Park, number 02 dash 55. PUD one as submitted.
Support.
Moved by Wyer, support by Moore. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Commissioner Wyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner D'Esico?
Yes.
Commissioner Dalu?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Could I make one other comment? Would you humor me?
Sure.
With me tonight is Brandon Wagner. Brandon is our construction coordinator for Lancaster at Central Park, so when you drive through there and see that it's one of the cleaner sites that we have, Brandon gets the credit for that. Brandon will also be working at Kensington, and we are slowly transitioning Brandon into land development. We're going to pull him into land development, so hopefully, at some point in the future, Brandon will be here representing us as well.
Oh, good.
Thanks. Good night.
All right, you, too. Mr. Wynn?
Three quick items. We have the administrative report for signs that we approved and temporary use permits over the last two months, and we had 36 signs over that period of time. Next month, or next meeting, we will offer annual report for the year. We just didn't have everything finalized for, for this particular meeting. Second item is, every 18 months to two years, we work on some zoning text amendments. We've identified some sections of the ordinance that we think would benefit from some revisions. All we've done right now is just give you the outline of what we're looking at. We, the building department's meeting tomorrow, along with Jordan, to talk about some of their concerns, so we, you know, we want to make sure we're reflecting what they want to do as well. It's kind of a joint effort. And then, we probably would have a draft of the amendments for you to consider, March or April, probably. Hold the public hearing in spring.
Okay.
And then, the last item is, over the holidays, I did meet with our consultants, LSL Planning, to kind of get a feel where we are in the master plan process, and there's a couple things we're going to be doing. We did want to reach out to the high schools and talk to their government classes, and engage, you know, the students at that level, of getting some feedback. The next public, we're going to have a public information meeting, it's going to include department heads and public agencies like the Road Commission, County Planning and